Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the town of Milton Select Board. Tonight, in attendance, members Vice Chair Roxanne Musto, Secretary John Cohane, and Member Zoll, and Member Bradley will be joining by Zoom. Good evening. I'd ask that everyone please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move to item number two, item number three, which is public comment. This week, this town saw the tragic loss of a vital and vibrant member. The wife of one of the members of our planning board, Sean Fahey. His wife, Janice, passed away after a courageous battle with cancer. And anyone who was in this town this week saw the immense outpouring of love and humanity for Sean, for his son, Michael, their daughters, Megan, Kate, Kara. And no child should ever have to woo a parent, and no one should have to woo, leave this earth in such a way that is so tough and so painful. But for each of them, and I said this to Sean at the wake, the pride and love that existed amongst everyone, both at the wake and the funeral on Saturday, is truly a credit to this woman's life. And so I'd like to ask everyone to please join us in a moment of silence for the Fahey family, but most importantly, for the life of Janice Fahey. Thank you very much. Item number three is public comment. I see no one in the massive crowds at the counseling tonight. And do I, I don't think I see anyone online. So, you're gonna be happy, Mr. Zoll. We may be done by 8 o'clock. Mr. Zoll has a hard stop by 8 o'clock. One move to item-
That would work right for me, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Item four, which is questions for the school building committee regarding the new school project. As Mr. Milano talked about at the last meeting, we're in the process of going through the MSBA process, which hopefully will be a positive outcome for our community and for our public school system. So what I'd like to try to do is if any of the members have any questions that they would like addressed regarding this. I don't think that either the school administration or the school committee is ready yet to come to us with a proposal above and beyond gaining MSBA approval. But if anyone has questions that they would like to have addressed or would like to send to, through Mr. Milano, to the superintendent, or to Chair Carroll, now's the time to do it. And I see Ms. Bradley has her hand up. Is that a hand? I see a hand.
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. I'm sorry I'm not there. I have two sick people in my home, and it requires me to be here. So I just want to make sure that when something comes before the school committee around the implementation of a new school and the cost thereof, whether or not the school building committee funds it, we do not have any questions. And so this is an opportunity for our committee to put forth questions to the Select Board. It's not even the Select Board. It's the School Building Committee, which is based under town meeting member. So I just want to make sure that nobody has any questions. Because let's say we don't get any of this school building committee money. I don't want there to be 900 questions as to why we can't do this. So your questions right now need to come forward so that the school building committee, that the town meeting members actually put forward, start to do work on that. And I just don't want this to be delayed another five years. So if none of our fellow representatives have questions, that's amazing. But I don't want to hear it when Sean O'Rourke comes back in six months, and we didn't get the SBC money and all the other things. I don't want to hear it. So today's your day, and you have plenty of notice. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. So you're referring to us as a committee. I believe you're referring to us as our board questions for the committees, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is correct. The last time that the school building committee came before us, our committee, there were many members, multiple members, who said that they had questions about things. And those questions were never fully answered. I agree. So today's the day. Put your questions on the table. Let's move forward because we need a new school. So when the school building committee comes back in six months and you say to them, "I have questions." I want it on the record today that we had ample opportunity to ask every question of the school building committee, and our committee, our Select Board Committee, has chosen not to say anything. That's what I want.
Thank you. I don't think, anyone else? Questions? Ms. Musto, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, John. Mr. Cohane.
My understanding was that it was, what questions do we have in order to put the debt exclusion on the ballot? That's the question. Is that correct, Erin?
Okay, so first of all, if we're gonna use last names, it's Ms. Bradley.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ms. Bradley.
It's okay. It's okay. There seems to be some confusion around how we address people at certain times. So I'm fine with, if you want to call me Erin, then I'm gonna call you John. So moving forward, yes. If the school, if we don't get any funding from the state of Massachusetts to fund a new school, and we are moving forward with the school building committee's recommendations, what are the questions that the Select Board has to them so that we can vote, whether in favor or not? I don't, however you want to vote is how you want to vote. But however you want to vote, all your questions should be answered. That's what I'm trying to get to. Because what ends up happening, John, is that we do not actually ask the questions. And that has been something that has been on our radar now since July. It came up in August. It came up in September. That's why we're doing this again today. So if you have questions about a new building, today's the day to ask them. Because otherwise, what's gonna happen is that you guys are gonna get a proposal, and you're gonna say, "I have 9 million questions," and then we're not gonna get any more. So I just wanted today to be a day of questions so that Sean, his committee, the committee that was appointed by the town meeting members, can do their work and try and find out some answers for those questions that are impeding a decision from many members of our Select Board.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cohane.
Again, can I clarify, Ms. Bradley? This is, these are questions to the school building committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Zoll, I see your hand is up. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I know Ms. Musto had her hand up before me. I don't have a way of-
She just pointed to-
Being in the room, so if she'd like to go first, that's fine.
She pointed to your yellow hand in the air, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So just, I really don't think that we need to drag this on too long. There was a list of questions that Ms. Musto actually had, ready to go in, I think, that might have been in July, when we initially were presented with the budget. And to Mr. Cohane's point, our job is really to just make sure that the citizens of Milton have the information that they need to make an informed choice. Our job is not to, you know, fund this or not fund this. Our job is to put this to the people of Milton. So we've had several months now of opportunities to understand the plan, the number, and this should be our opportunity to just come forward with a straightforward list. Some of the questions, I know we've heard some answers to before, but I think let's put them all down on paper. But I think one thing that we are not, we should not be doing, is looking at alternatives. Because the town has decided, obviously the Commonwealth has decided, that we have an overcrowding situation. We need a new school. This committee has worked for six years to present an opportunity. So our job is not in the next 10 minutes to come up with five different plans. It's to come up with the specific questions that we want to ask the school building committee to respond to, so that we can feel confident when voters go to the polls in April, or whenever we get this on the ballot, that they are informed. And of course, the school building committee has also offered to have informational sessions. I'm sure that offer would still stand once it's approved for the ballot and before it goes on the ballot. So I think, just to clarify, I think, a little bit from Mr. Cohane, that is my understanding. And for the record, I have no questions. I feel very well informed about what's happened here. And I feel that we have enough information to present this to the voters, as is. But I welcome my colleagues on the Select Board to ask their clarifying questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Ms. Musto.
Thank you. So I want to preface this by saying the questions that I have are related to this project. So if it goes in the fundings with MSBA, my understanding is it may be a different project. And so I think I would reserve the right, as I think we all should, to ask questions if it becomes a different project than what we have here on the table. And as far as the questions, I will go through my questions. I have quite a few. And they're just to gain better knowledge of the project and for the residents, too. And with that being said, I think I'll start saying what they are. But sometimes when you get answers to questions, to my colleagues, I just want to say that sometimes you get answers to questions, and they prompt additional questions from the answers you get. So I would want to make sure that when we get answers to some of these questions, if we had a follow-up, that we would be able to ask that follow-up. Because sometimes that does require a follow-up. So with that being said, I'm gonna read you some of the questions that I thought of as I was thinking about this topic. So one of them is a breakdown of the cost of the utilities per year for each building, because we're talking about two different buildings. So I would like to know what that would be. Cost of implementing the new energy codes per each building. What amount of rebates are we factoring in over time? And have these rebates, or could these rebates change over time? For instance, a loss of an energy program, different energy programs that may become available or may be lost. What would that mean? What are the staffing costs for each building? What is the square foot price for each fully furnished building? So not just building the building, but putting all of the equipment in each of these buildings. So a breakout, again, of each of those. What is the square footage of Pierce School versus the new school? And again, some of these questions and answers are probably readily available, but it'd be great to just have them answered in a running list. It would be really helpful. What is the square foot price for each fully furnished building? Why is the addition at the proposed middle school auditorium smaller than that one at Pierce? Will it accommodate a large number of students for a student assembly, for instance? I know we have Pierce players and different things, so I'm just wondering how that would work. How many people does the auditorium hold now at Pierce? And how many would this one hold? Square footage of Pierce Auditorium versus the new one. Do you have any estimated costs for stormwater management for this project? My understanding is that that could be a significant cost, given the grade of the land. I've also understood that there may be a retaining wall proposed at this site. So I'd like more information on the height of it, the length of it, and what materials are gonna be used on that wall. What's the estimated cost of the wall, including that engineering and design? Because a wall like that, you probably would have to have professionally designed, obviously, and engineered. What type of masonry products will be used on this new building? I know that when I was around, when they did the other buildings, and, you know, on some of the buildings, they had issues because there's different types of products, whether you use, you know, concrete masonry units versus like a waterstruck brick like Tucker School has. They had water issues at the high school with water coming in shortly after, and that had to be repaired. Will solar panels be used on the roof? What type of roof system and what will the warranty, what type of roof system will they use? And what will the warranty be on that? I know that Milton High had problems with their roof, and I believe the builder, the contractor had to come out and repair those. How many trees will be removed? Many of those trees are mature. And how many will be replaced? What is the cost of landscaping, as well as screening, for the neighbors and the abutters? And I know that there are two other things here. One is, I know, one of my colleagues said, you know, this is the plan. You know, they shouldn't be necessarily looking at all these different plans. But I think that there should be looking at what if, the worst-case scenario, that, you know, this goes to a vote, whether it's with MSBA funding or not. Do we have a Plan B ready to go to people? And then this is more for, I guess, Nick and the town. Like what's a full picture of the outstanding commitments that we have in terms of costs altogether? Because I, you know, I know we're gonna be talking about the Finance Committee report. So want to have a better understanding of what's going on with the town side of the finances. But as far as my questions, those are the questions I have now. As I said, some of these answers that we get back, they may require a follow-up question. And I think we should be allowed to do that if we have a follow-up related to the questions that we asked. Thank you.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we want to have Mr. Milano send these to Mr. O'Rourke?
Sure. I have no problem.
I just-
There were a lot of them.
I'll come right back, Mrs. Zoll. Just, I just wanted to, I think we should probably forward these to him and let him-
Yeah, I can give them to the-
Take a dive at them. Before I comment, go ahead, Mrs. Zoll.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You read my mind. That was one thought that I had, was if Ms. Musto has all of these questions written down, it'd be very helpful, I think, to the committee for her to send them, or send them to Nick, so he can send them through. My overarching concern at this point with all of these questions is not the questions themselves. It's the school building committee's ability to answer the questions as they are out of funding, and we don't have a town meeting scheduled until February. So I just, you know, want to make sure that we're thinking about how do we expect a committee that is unfunded to respond to some of these questions? And I believe, Ms. Musto, you're right in that some of these questions can be answered by simply looking at the proposal and doing math on square footage and things like that. Other things, like the staffing question, have been answered in a public setting before. And it's important to note that the staffing numbers at the new school will also then sort of draw down on staffing numbers at the other schools because fifth grades will be moved, sixth grades will be moved, so that the number of teachers actually doesn't change dramatically. But it's a fair question, and I just want to make sure that we're empowering the committee to answer the questions to the Select Board's satisfaction. Because right now, they're out of funding, and there's no path for them to get more, get more resources, and so that they can do the answers. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I just want to follow up on one comment to Mr. Milano. I don't believe they're out of funding as of yet. Are they?
I'd have to double check, but I think, I think they've identified what they expect to spend on design to this point, and have a plan to draw that all down. And the design will only take it to a certain point, at which point there wouldn't be, the funding would be exhausted. So I think to Mr. Zoll's point, some of these may be future design decisions, rather than now designed decisions. But we can always have Sean respond accordingly and go through the list.
I think a lot of these questions, they should have already done this. They should be able to answer these. We just, we just need to answer it. I think that a lot of us, they should already be able to answer, from what my knowledge, where they're at. So, Ms. Musto, go ahead.
Thank you. That's a great point. I mean, you have a project manager that has experience. So the project manager should be able to answer a lot of these questions. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just gonna make a couple final comments, and then we can move on. So my questions are really very simple. It's either we get MSBA funding, or we don't get MSBA funding. So with regard to the six months, my thought as chair would be if we don't get the MSBA funding, and we know in December that we need to immediately, and I will put this out, I would ask Mr. Milano to put this out, to the school committee chair and to the school building committee chair, is that they need to know where we're gonna go from there. We're gonna stay on the same path, or we're not? Because my six, so I don't think we'll need six months of that. The second thing is on the funding. I know that the initial request is 173 million. I've read in the papers, I've heard unofficially in some unofficial meetings that they're reevaluating as to whether or not they want to still go with two buildings or just one building. So I think, I don't even want to presume. I think that's something they're gonna have to come with us. And I think that if MSBA doesn't happen, then I'm hoping that that's something they're working on now that they can come. Because I think that's a question we're gonna, I think we would all agree, that's a question we're gonna ask very quickly, like, okay, is the number still 173? Is it less than 173? Is it two buildings? As I say, I've read in the paper, but officially, I think we're gonna need to know that. And then finally, to me, I've said publicly, I'm willing to let this go to a vote. I do still worry about an operational override, but I'm a little bit comforted by the free cash amount that we received, or we were notified of this week, that maybe we can push that off another year. But it's still, whether it's 17, whatever the number is, it's still the highest amount of debt exclusion we've ever tried to do. So I think being ready to go, April will be here before we know it. I think being ready to go and being able to answer all these questions is in the best interest of all of us. The school committee, the school building committee, Finance Committee, everyone working on this. Because this is, as you said, Mr. Zoll, this is an important project for our community. Okay?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley, and that'll be the final comment, then I gotta move on to this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two comments because of what you just said. First of all, if you'd like to talk about the Finance Committee and what we've learned about, this is, again, I brought this up.
You wanted us to wait till we jumped to item six?
I will happily resign as being Chair of the Finance Committee to give the appropriate reports. That's one thing. Second of all, are we about to get school building committee updates from yourself? From our representative, or from Sean O'Rourke? Because it seems to me, after watching multiple school building committee meetings at this point, that we are not getting updates that are actual, real-time. And so, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to take that on, God bless you. I appreciate that. But I would like for us to all be on the same page, and I would like for all of us to actually know what's happening with the school building committee without having to watch an additional four hours of meetings on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. Thank you. Those are my two questions.
To me?
Yes, Mr. Chair, for you.
I'm not asking-
One, do you want to give the Finance Committee report? And do you want to be in charge of that?
I do not.
And two?
Can I answer? Can I answer what you just asked me? So what I refer to is I refer-
Why are you talking about a surplus that hasn't even been mentioned by the Finance Committee?
I don't know what you're referring to.
You, Mr. Chair, you just did. You responded to the fact that we are about to get more free cash.
I did.
Yep. And that's something that the Finance Chair would normally do.
You can do that, but it's public information. I just mentioned it.
I know it's public information, Mr. Chair. The point is, is the respect to the people that have the positions.
Okay, Ms. Bradley. Well, let's move on then to item six, the Select Board.
No. Let's move on to the next thing, which is, how am I supposed to get my school building committee reports? Is that through our appointment? Is that through you, or is that through Mr. Milano?
It could be all three. This is a, this is a joint effort on behalf of all of us.
If it's gonna be public notice, then I want to know how we get our information from the school building committee.
When the school building committee wants to come before us, they can come before us. You just heard what I said.
Don't we have a liaison?
I think that was pretty detailed, Ms. Bradley. I'm not gonna speak anymore about this. I think that was pretty detailed what I said, I thought.
You don't get to do that, Mr. Chair. You get to tell me how I learn about what's happening with the school building committee. Is that through our representative, or is that through you, or is that through Mr. Milano? Because if it's through Mr. Milano, it's not public information.
Okay.
Can I?
Moving on.
Say one last name?
Moving on.
Oh, you're not answering. Gotcha.
We're all done with this. We're all done. So moving on to item number five, discussion approvals, special town meeting dates for February Town Meeting. Mr. Milano, I'll go to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as we've been thinking about when a special town meeting might take place, we're not looking at December at this point. I had started to pull together some potential dates in the spring. As we are talking about a school project that might potentially come forward, whether MSBA or not, there would be a potential town meeting vote required as part of that process. If the town is accepting the MSBA process, we would have to appropriate money to our feasibility study and schematic design. And to be ready for that, it would be helpful to have a town meeting on the calendar. I drafted a timeline that we typically do for these town meetings. I think, you know, it's kind of a hard thing because we don't have this board, we don't have a full article quite yet. So we don't necessarily need to lock in a date. But I think if there's, the board would like to give clarity to folks as to when town meeting might take up these school-related questions, it might be good to have a date penciled in. February 10th would be before February vacation, that's why we picked it. The challenge with these dates in this time of year is that the burden puts on the warrant committee and staff to prepare the warrant and get it out. So a February town meeting would mean that the warrant would have to be finished by mid-January, January 15th timeframe, which means the warrant committee would have to have completed its deliberations, prepared comments. So if there's, you know, a real desire to have this earlier, I think February 10th would be the earliest that we should think about scheduling it. If there's flexibility to push that back, any wiggle room in moving the date back by a couple weeks now gives the warrant committee and staff a little bit more time in the new year to pull together the warrant. So I don't have a firm recommendation at this time. I think February 10th, or I would certainly skip the week of February vacation, and then February 24th would be the Monday after February vacation. So I think those are two possible dates the board could consider. And then we would start soliciting warrant articles for that if it was selected.
So you're saying pushing back. You mean pushing forward? When you say pushing back, you mean back into January, or you mean pushing forward in the later February?
Later, a later date, sorry.
I'm like, pushing back is gonna make it even worse. So you're talking about potentially pushing forward, but February 10th is your optimal date to wanna?
I think that would be the earliest that is feasible. And if there's a desire to have a meeting, February 10th, I think, is the earliest it should take place. And more flexibility is afforded the later it gets. And by the flip side is, the warrant committee will be doing its annual town meeting work in March and late February. So I think that kind of four-week window between early February to early March is probably the best bet at this point. So I think February 24th would be a good one, or the first weekend in March, if the boards, you know, incline to set a date and give clarity to folks as to when a special town meeting might take place.
Do you want to place hold both the 10th and the 24th?
We can do that. It's just that-
Because auditorium, oh, yeah. I'm just talking about the logistics of holding it and having it, just-
So we have the space reserved for the week of the 10th already. We didn't lock down any later dates quite yet. Based on this discussion, we can go do that. But if there's a commitment to have a special town meeting, then we can lock down those-
I feel like I get a cheat code by putting my hand up here and being able to speak first, so.
I see it.
It's like, if they've got their hand up, Mr. Chair. Just two quick comments on this. So in August, we were debating around the school, and I feel like now it's the end of October and we're starting to talk about a town meeting. To me, this seems like we, an error of our own making in that we really should have been planning much further in advance for a town meeting, knowing that the school building committee was going to be running out of funding, that we were going to be having these issues. In addition, we learned in August about the home rule petition, that concept which could save Milton seniors' money, significant money on their taxes if they are in financial distress. And at the time, I asked Mr. Milano, what's the best time to start on that? And the answer was pretty much as soon as possible because it has to go to legislature and it can take a long time. So I would urge us to do everything that we can do to have this meeting as soon as possible. And I just want to clarify for my second comment. Mr. Milano, you probably have this, but in terms of this special, or in terms of this being, you know, a special town meeting and not our annual, in addition to the school building committee, I'm assuming the home rule petition, what are the other articles that you feel like we're going to need to push through in February that can't wait for the regular town meeting? Thank you.
I think those are the two main ones that we have on our radar at this time. You know, this is the time of year where folks start to talk about articles that would normally be lined up for an annual. I think if there's an ability to pull some stuff off an annual town meeting and get it done in a special, I think that'd be great. But at this time, the two main ones would be a warrant article related to the school project and that warrant article for the home rule petition that you just mentioned.
You don't want to open up another couple of cans, do you, Mr. Zoll? Is that what you're trying to do here?
Not at all, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure that I knew how many cans were in the pantry and what size they were. But specifically, I think for the home rule petition, we had asked for an article to be drafted, so that should be, should be pretty straightforward and ready to go, I would think. So it's really just the school article that will be more complicated. Is that right, Mr. Milano?
Mr. Milano's nodding his head in the affirmative. I know you can't see him. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
I was going to ask about the school. It's on the warrant. They've already presented, right, to the warrant committee? They had two different articles. They wanted the school building committee, one for the full funding amount and one for the design.
Correct. Yes, the school building committee voted to recommend two articles to the select board, the first being the full project, the other one being the design. I think that design was with the idea of it being a December town meeting and having that money to use to work on the spring. So that might change potentially slightly. And then the question for this board would be, you know, what is going to go and when in terms of what will go on the warrant at that time? And then that would be, again, the other curveball would be MSBA or not, might change that too.
And a quick follow-up thing. It might be for you too. How long before the spring election do we have to approve the debt exclusion? Is there a deadline?
Oh, sorry, that was the other factor for this. So if the town were, if the town meeting were to take up the school project and the inclination were to have the ballot question itself be on the annual town election rather than a special election, there's a 90-day time limit. So the town meeting has to be within 90 days of the election. So to have a town meeting in January, that is a potential vote on the full project, we would then have to have a special town election rather than waiting to the annual town election. Right.
But it would be after.
Yeah, at this point, and looking at February and beyond, it could go on the annual town election warrant and stay within the 90-day rule that's required.
And I want to thank you for keeping your eye on that because we've talked about this repeatedly. Okay. We good? Okay. Item, oh, so do we want to make, do we want to vote on placeholder? I mean, do-
Why don't I inquire about availability for the week of the 24th for both the space as well as the moderator, the town clerk? And then at the next meeting, we can confirm the meeting date. And we'll just let folks know if they have warrant articles in mind, now's the time to start submitting them to our office.
These are cans of worms, Mr. Zoll. Okay.
Yes, they are, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, that can't be avoided.
Go ahead, that's all right.
Mr. Milano, can I just ask real quick? Do we, are we, we're holding both of those Mondays that you suggested already? Is that right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to follow up. I have a follow-up question, I believe, before you even asked your question. As soon as we have those, if you could just circulate it to the board, they will confirm those dates.
Yeah, we'll do.
Is that all right with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Item number six, discussion update, select board finance committee report. Ms. Bradley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'll defer to you.
I wasn't at that meeting, so it's your committee, Ms. Bradley.
It is, Mr. Chair. And so there are some things that we were made aware of that it seems that you would like to share, so I'm going to let you do that.
Ms. Milano, were you at that meeting?
I was, Mr. Chair.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So the main news that was that the Department of Revenue certified the town's free cash on October 11th at $4,563,000, which is greater than the past couple of years, and we've been trending higher on free cash. So that's the highest amount that we can remember. Obviously, it gives some additional tools to the town as we're developing the budget moving forward. So that's the main news item out of the finance committee from its prior meeting.
And that we have a joint meeting coming up this week with this school committee, right?
Oh, yes. The school committee finance subcommittee and the select board finance committee are meeting on Friday morning for an initial conversation. And we'll report back at a future meeting.
Thank you. Item numbers, we're going to defer item nine. Item number seven is discussion approval, sale of a water bond to the MWRA authority in the amount of $2,799,800. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, as an MWRA member, have access to zero-interest loans from the MWRA that are paid back over a 10-year time period. Each year at town meeting, there's an annual warrant article to approve appropriations in order to take advantage of this program. And so what would typically happen is we'll get these approvals and then we'll line up water main projects, get the projects moving, and then access the funding from the MWRA. At this point, we're asking for $2.79 million in funding from the MWRA. These would be, the money would be issued to the town this year. First payments would begin next year. We'd pay that back, just the principal over 10 years with 0% owed on that. The projects that they're financing are, one project that's completed is a water main replacement project on several streets last year. And then the second element of that funding is for water main projects that are going to take place later this month and be in next month on Lantern, Thompson, Pond, and Windsor Streets. So general water main replacements and updates, total cost of the MWRA assistance is $2.79 million.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the sale of a water bond in the, to the Mass Water Resource Authority in the amount of $2,799,800 in the form of the vote prepared by bond council.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
Those are projects that are done? Or just, one's completely done and one's just about done?
It's just starting.
Starting, yeah.
Yeah.
This is an annual, we try to do this annually.
Correct, yeah.
Obtain the benefit of this grant as often as possible, as often as possible. So this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Myself, yes, that's unanimous. Okay. Item number 10, item number eight, discussion approval, conservation restriction for 1268 Canaveral to be held by the trustees of the reservation. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are approached by the trustees of the reservations with a request to approve a conservation restriction as required by mass general law. This conservation restriction will go over most of the property located at 1268 Canton Ave, which if you're looking at the Eustace Estate, is to the left of the Eustace Estate and behind. This is mainly due to the trustees had participated in historic New England's purchase of the property. The conservation restriction will limit any new construction or will prevent any major construction or subdivision of this property, and it'll be available per passive recreation. That's kind of the big picture overview. I know a representative from the trustees is on the meeting if there are any more detailed questions from the board.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Just wondering, Mr. Milano, if you had reached out to the neighbors?
We sent out a note.
That specific neighbor, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And you didn't get any other?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion. You want to do the motion? Go ahead, Ms. Musto.
I'll make a motion to approve the conservation restriction for 1268 Canton Ave, Eustace Estate, to be held by the trustees of reservations.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Cohen. This will be, again, be a roll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item nine is deferred. Item number 10, discussion approval, meeting minutes September 10th of 2024 and September 24th of 2024. I'm getting you there, Mr. Zoll. We good? We got a minute? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Please, do I have a motion?
Okay, okay.
It's not in front of me, but yes, Mr. Chair, you have a motion.
Move to approve the amended meeting minutes for September 10th, September 24th, 2024.
Second? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Say to my Mr. Cohen, roll call vote. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Is that me? Yes.
Yes, that's you, yes. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that's unanimous. Okay. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. Early voting is underway. You can vote now in person at town hall. Business hours this week and next week, and they'll also be available on Saturday from 10 to 5. Mail-in ballots should be out as well, so please return those or join us in person on November 5th. The Health Department is hosting a forum on a discussion around using the opioid settlement funds and how folks in town would like to see those monies used. That's being held on October 30th at 5:30 here on the Council on Aging. We released the request for expressions of interest for the East Milton Fire Station today. Sent out a notice from the town website. We'll be reaching out to groups around town as well just to make them aware of it. Those expressions of interest are due back on December 13th. We've had a few folks already reach out before releasing it, which is good. So again, we're seeking ideas and concepts for the site that would inform a formal procurement process in the future. The Halloween stroll that the Chamber hosts annually is this Saturday, October 26th. It's 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM over in East Milton, Manning Park on the deck. Nice event to bring the kids and get the Halloween candy started early. And lastly, there are a number of paving projects that will be commencing tomorrow. A number of streets have been milled over the past week.
We can see, according to one driving in here.
So Governor Beltran Randolph, Briarfield, Hawthorne, Virginia, Walnut and Clapp here near town hall and the Council on Aging, the Brush Hill Road, excuse me, near Fuller Village, a portion of that was milled and will be repaved. And we've already completed some along Brook, Reeddale, and Central. So appreciate DPW Engineering getting these projects out and done. Those will probably take the next few days. So if you're in those areas, sorry for the disturbance over the past week, but you should have a nice paved road, hopefully by the end of this week and maybe early next week. And, Mr. Chair, those are my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. No report for the chair's report. I'm going to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just one quick thing. The fire station had an open house. Yep, you can do it.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, they had an open house this past weekend on Saturday. It was very well-attended, a very nice event, and it was great to see a lot of people there. Before the end of that.
It's great that it's open. It's great that, I still can't believe it's done, but I said to Chair Wass, I'm like, can you believe, I said, the first community meeting we're seeing, the first public meeting, I'm like, can you believe this is done? Because it's just so hard to get things done. But real credit to everyone who worked, the neighbors, everyone in town that worked on it, the architects, and of course, the new home for the firefighters, which is so well-deserved. Ms. Bradley, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I wanted to commend our DPW committee on paving near my house. I live by Brook and Central and Reeddale, all were that process, and so I appreciate that. But I really raised my hand, Mr. Chair, to salute one of my colleague's children because I think that, I think that our best thing is what our kids do, right? Because if our kids are amazing, then we did a really good job. So I want to commend Ms. Musto on her son's passage of the bar this last week. As I know, it's a huge feat, and I'm in the midst of still learning, and so I just want to give a big shout out to Michael Musto for passing the bar and for Mr. and Mrs. Musto for supporting him the entire time, because it does take a village, and Mom and Dad do a lot to make that happen. So congratulations to you guys and your family.
Thank you. That was very nice. That was really very nice. Thank you very much. Thank you. It is hard. He worked hard and it's, you know, I will just quickly say, going, working full-time and going at night for four years, it's a long haul. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Congratulations.